This is the third Tuesday of the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled city, slippery city council meeting tonight. I mean slippery outside. I call this meeting to order. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to defy the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with the Wisconsin State statutes. So the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take role for us.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan. Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman. Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Eight present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. Consent agenda, these are items that we take with one motion unless we want, unless any council member or staff member would like to see them moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. Anybody? If not, we're looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, regular agenda. Again, it is what you see on there. So we would need a motion to approve the regular agenda as printed. So move.
Sorry?
I'm sorry, by Peterson, was it? Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have a plaque to present to our police chief. Chief, if you want to come on out. Congratulations and thank you. Let me just read it. It says, "Police Chief Brian Ozell, given an appreciation of your 25 years of continuing service for the citizens of the city of Wapaka, and this is presented by the mayor and the common council on the 15th day of January 2019." Awesome. Thank you. Turn around here. Okay, next we have public input. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less. Any public input?
I don't have it exactly, but I had an occasion to try and use a library drop-off box. It isn't handy at all. It's, I don't know who designed it or who put it there, but it's not very handy.
Okay, I guess I haven't used it yet, but...
Peg, do you, what do you say?
We've had lots of complaints. You can't reach it from your car, you actually have to get out of your car.
Oh, is that why it's not handy?
Well, think about going to McDonald's and not, and having to get out of your car when you go through a drive-through. It's the same principle. You really want to be able to just drop them in, and you can't.
Yes, sir.
Steve, is it because you have to pull in and back out of a stall, or is it just the reach?
Well, if there's a car parked there, that you can't pull in there anyway.
Yeah.
And it's just unhandy. It just is really unhandy. The old one, you just to drive by and just boop, and you're done.
Okay. Guess we'll have to do some brainstorming then.
Yeah, take a look at it and see if we can't make it a little easier.
Ma'am, I don't use the library that often.
Well, at least one more time than I did. I'm sorry. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, let's move on to the department head reports then. Kathy, you want to lead us off?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My report starts on page four of the packet. This is our busiest time of the year as we are working between 2018 and 2019, trying to close the books. We should have preliminary numbers for council at the February 5th meeting because the auditors will be in for final fieldwork on February 12th. I've asked the departments to provide me with any inclusions into last year's financials by January 25th so I can close, close everything down. I'm going to be working with R.W. Barrett, our financial advisors, on the 2019 capital financing that should be coming to council late February, early March, so that we can go to the market again for our financing. And I'm also going to be adding some TIF analysis work so that we can continue to analyze the TIFs and what impact closing or keeping them open have on, on the city tax rate. So we'll be doing some more analysis on the TIF districts again this year. And other than that, have anything else?
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Any questions, comments for Kathy? All right, let's move on over to the library. Peg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. So one of our values for the library is a value of inclusion. What we are trying to do is to open doors for increased engagement, and one of the ways we're going to be doing that is we're going to be rearranging the furniture a little bit and creating an engagement space kind of right across from the circulation desk at the library. We've been really trying to address the needs of our community, and one of the things that we've been told is that people don't feel connected to each other. So we've worked on civil discourse programming, and now on Wednesday nights, we have a discussion of Brene Brown principles. And if you're not familiar with her, she's a researcher and a psychologist, and she really talks about how people need to belong and feel connections, and the only way to do that is to open up to other people. So we're, we're experiencing that on Wednesday nights at 6:30. Everyone's welcome to attend. We're also asking that people make a commitment to read this winter, and we have a winter reading program. It's all online, and you can, you can log in from the library or from home, and you just log your, your minutes, and then you can win a free book at the end of that, of the month. Also, we have a Global View Book Club, so we're not just looking inside of what our community looks like, but we're looking at the entire world. So each one of our librarians is taking a month and a book about a certain region of the world and trying to make, create a greater understanding of that. All of those things are on our website for you to view. One thing we've been working on for about a year, Sue Abrahamson, has been trying to get a children's author, his name is Jarrett J. Krosaska, to Wapaka, and he wrote a book last year called Hey Kidde. And Hey Kidde is sequential art, or graphic novel, as you may have heard of it in the past, so it's a comic book form, and it's a memoir of his family life. And he started life being raised by his grandparents, and he didn't know why, but he later found out that his mother had been incarcerated for drug abuse. And so there was an addiction problem within his home. It is a way of him expressing how it was in his life, but also that he was a survivor. And along with that, a visit from the author, who will be at the library on February 4th, we also will have school presentations. Every school child, child in the district will get an opportunity to see Jarrett Krosaska, and then we have an exhibit of his art. And also our exhibit room coordinator, Liz Kinnear, has worked with the mental health professionals and some of the people who've been really tackling the situation of addiction in our community. And there'll be a mental health panel on January 28th. All of those things are on our website. You can access them, you can call the library. So those are some of the things we're working on. Right now, we have amnesty just for a few more days. If you, so if you have overdue fines, maybe you couldn't get those things in the book drop right away, stop in. We will erase those fines. And we've had some real successes there, too. We had a family that came in that had stayed away because they had a long overdue book, and when they heard we had amnesty, they brought the book back, had their fines waived, and then were able to use the library again. Also, January 29th, we have something called Community Child Development Day, and this is an opportunity for parents to bring their young children in, have them observed at play, and make sure that they're developing, and if they aren't, getting them on the right track. So if you know anybody with young kids and they, they have an opportunity, have them stop by the library, they can make an appointment, or they can just drop in. But lots of things going on at the library. Stop in and take a look. The exhibit is open anytime the library's open. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Peg. Comments, questions for Peg? All right, let's move over to Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, my report starts on page 66 of the packet. Currently working on some of the end-of-the-year stuff within our department and working on getting the council a year in review. Be happy to announce the preliminary numbers, but last year, we had a pretty good year issuing permits and revenue coming in. We issued about 360 permits last year and a total revenue of just over $130,000 into the city. We typically budget about $60,000 a year in permit fees, so we definitely have seen an increase in development. If everyone remembers back in August, we also became a delegated community, so that permitted Jane, our building inspector, to actually handle a lot of state review for, plan review for architects, which has definitely cut down on the cost and the time that a lot of these architects usually had to wait eight to 12 weeks to get through the state process. So that has definitely brought in some additional revenue as well. My report also includes now, we've actually combined them, but with the mayor report, every month you will see all the permits that we've issued. We've also started to include in your packet now the code enforcement reports that we have for the Plan Commission and for ourselves. Alan wanted me to address one question that came up in yours, especially on the code enforcement side of it. In our software that we utilize, we have three different options to pick. So we either have a building violation, a zoning violation, or what you see on here, which is a lot of it is nuisance violations. Those are typically the public nuisances, grass cutting, not having your sidewalk shoveled, unlicensed vehicles. So we just wanted to clarify what, what the nuisance meant for that. Also, working on a letter going out to all the contractors as a thank you for the development and the work that they've done in our community. As part of the budgeting process, last year, we looked at our permit fees, and we did modify some of those. We've also created and come up with a new structure to streamline the process and minimize calculation time within our department, so that's definitely helping us. And I also want to plug at the January Plan Commission meeting, and tomorrow night, we are having our first community chat, also our kickoff meeting for our project for this year within the department. We are working towards rewriting the entire zoning code. So within your packet on page 68, you kind of see the project which we've termed Code Next, and that's going to be a holistic code rewrite of our zoning code, so looking forward to that. So certainly invite, this is not just a project for the downtown, you know, this is a community-wide project. We're looking at the entire zoning code, so we invite residents, business owners, property owners, to come to Farmer State Bank tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00, and there'll be a presentation and some activities for them to participate in.
All right. Thank you, Brennan. Any questions, comments for Brennan? All right, let's jump over to Mr. Behrens then.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. My report can be seen on page 77 and 78 within the packet, and as usual, starting with the wastewater site. We submitted our permit application, the DNR, for the wastewater treatment plant. Now, this is the permit that we run underneath for our compliance, our sampling, the whole nine yards. So it is submitted. They have the, with the DNR for their schedule, should get back to us by June as a timeframe to basically tell us what our new permit will be in the future. Now, this will basically be our compliance schedule, what we all have to do for our treatment and our sampling and all that. So we have an idea that things are going to change. I've mentioned before some things with phosphorus. We may have to change our sampling schedule. We don't, we don't really know for sure, but we do have a couple of meetings set up with the DNR, hopefully shed light on that, but we'll know more in June, and I'm sure we will adapt and do what's best for the city and the environment. One thing in the wastewater treatment plant that we spent quite a bit of time on last month, actually December, Jesse and I, was filling our vacant position, so we received about 15 to 20 applications for our opening. We interviewed eight total people, and through two rounds of interviewing, we hired Sam Zabel, who just started just after, or January 7th, excuse me. Sam is, lives in Manoa, he's on the volunteer firefighter department there, worked 15 years at a manufacturing place up there, has a good background in pumps, hydraulics, and electrical work. So we, we got a good feeling that he's going to fit right in with us. So you see a new guy walking around, it's probably him. One bigger project, or probably the biggest project we're working on for the year at the treatment plant, is upgrading our aeration basin. Now, if you remember several years ago, we, we purchased a new blower, we had that Focus money. This is kind of that same area. The aeration basin is basically the guts in the central part of our plant. It provides the, I guess is the most important part of treatment in the plant, and also are by far the biggest energy user. So we're looking to upgrade that, reduce our energy usage, and then also purchase another one of these blowers so we can just lighten our load on our cost and our footprint on the environment. Streetside, you may have noticed that the streetlights are up outside, so that's finally done. The project is pretty much over with. We got a few issues out there, some of our poles came scratched, so we have to, I guess, go through the process of, of what happened there. So they look great, they're up, they're running. Blower did a great job, but the project has been pretty much just finished out and looks well. Evan Street, I will be doing an update a little bit later tonight, so I won't say too much about that. We had plenty of snow events, and we even had a rain event of all things in January, so. Waterside, we finally got well three back online. That was one of the two wells rehabbed last year. It was a long time coming, but it's back on. We have all of our wells up and running. We received notification from the DNR, we need to increase our sampling for Bactee samples. Now, this is just a code change, and we're just following suit, so there was nothing wrong with what we did. Basically, they just updated their code, and we're following suit. What that means is an extra sample every month, so we're going to have 12 extra bacteria samples every year in our water system. Facility side, Russ did it again. He received another tree grant of $4,000. Been working with Park and Rec, Andrew and Josh, because we have a plan to add a bunch of trees out at the eco park, and that was the focus of this tree grant of, hey, this $4,000, we could add quite a bit, use it for educational purposes, and expand basically our tree inventory here in the city. That pretty much wraps it up.
All right. Awesome. Questions, comments for Justin? All right, let's go over to Andrew, Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, my report starts on page 27. We'll start in the senior center. Coming up here at the beginning of the year, this is a time when we see a lot of memberships coming in, and everything's going well with that. Just sit down with Sarah and try to work out some different ways of maybe getting the word out there a little bit more about the senior center. I feel like, you know, we all know about it because we talk about it a lot, but there's a lot of people that still don't. So came up with some different ways there that she's going to be working on, trying to get the word out, trying to get a little bit spike in memberships there, which will be good since she's celebrating 50 years this year and having some special events for that. There will be tax help starting February 5th down there once a week. They always have ARP come in and help seniors with taxes throughout April 9th. So if you know somebody that needs some help, that's a good place to, to find that. We went through some, as part of the evaluation process, looking at some of the jobs and stuff and, and some of our part-time staff, and then I'll, I'll be addressing that later in a memo, so I'll bring that up for you today as well. On the recreation side, we're hoping to have winter rec fest on February 9th. At this point, it's not looking very good because of said rain in January that we have. So the hill is essentially just glare ice right now. We have shut off the lights, we try to keep people off of it as best that we can. Cassandra was coming up with some new ideas again. We talked about a little bit possibly like frozen turkey bowling, or curling, or something like that. And we'll keep going forward as if it's going to happen, but right now, unless we get a substantial amount of snow, it's, it's probably not going to happen, which means we'll have to cancel it unfortunately. But we'll make that decision the Monday beforehand, so you'll see at that point, yea or nay on that community event, which is one of, one of our better ones. It's really good. A lot of people come, people really enjoy the fireworks, so it'll be sad if we don't get it in there. So the other thing on that aspect is the booklet. We've talked a little bit about it in the past. Moving forward here, printing will happen soon. We'll get them in February. We'll start getting them out to the schools in March. So we're working with the schools to be able to get them out to all the kids in 4K through 6th grade. And we changed our booklet. It's going to be bigger, it's going to be better, and at this point, it's not costing us anything because of the company we're using. So those are all good things for us to get information out, so we're really hoping that helps us get it out to the families. On the park side, I'll be talking later about our dock. I know we've talked about it a little bit, as far as our South Park Beach, the little dock and the big docks, and we'll talk about that. And luckily, we received some donations as well, if you read some of that memo, so I'll talk about that a little bit later as well. Also, we had an amazing ice rink on Shadow Lake for about two days before the rain came again. It is still there, you can see where it is. I got some reports from people that live there, in that area, that they were using it that first weekend, that we actually got some snow, were able to pile it around, had some seats there for people to put their skates on. People were there both days, both nights. So we're hoping that we get a little bit more snow so we can try it again and keep it moving, and people can use it right now, it just doesn't look or feel the same when it's not, doesn't have the snow around it. And the whole lake is pretty much an ice rink at this point, so that's where we're at on that, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Questions, comments? Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Council. My report can be found on page 38. We're in a process right now, Jeff Johnson retired from the department and going through and filling his position. We have a couple candidates internally that are interested in it. So what we've done is we've put together a process that they have to go through, looking at doing interviews at the end of February and at the beginning, or sorry, the end of January. At the beginning of February, we're looking at having a special meeting for that, and we'll go ahead and make an appointment then at that time, and we'll continue to backfill the positions from there. So that's what we're working on internally with that. We've also received all our body cameras now, as well, our new ones, as well as our squad video systems. We have it tentatively set up right now at the beginning of March. We're hoping that our, our truck comes, that we don't wait until fall like we did last year to get our squads, that it comes and we can get that in and get that installed and get the body cameras working with them at the same time, and those will be different ones. If you ever watch television shows or you see acts on, on there, those are our body cameras that we'll be getting. They give us the best quality videos that are out there. We also, over Christmas time, the police commission and the officers for the police department adopted two families for Christmas. We're able to raise just a little over $300 from donations from the officers and the commission. And Alderman Chestnut, she always helps us find a couple of good families that are struggling at that time, so we're able to make somebody's Christmas, or two families' Christmases a little bit brighter. Couple teenagers and a very young child. And John Helgeson just recently celebrated, he's 23 years, and I forgot I was 25 years, so we're now the old timers in the department. So other than that, everything else is informational.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments for the Chief? All right, Josh.
We've been busy working on re-cabling this building in preparation of a new phone system. Just long story short, this building's not in good shape for cabling since it hasn't had any remodeling projects like other two buildings have had, so to be prepared for a new phone system in the future, this needs to get done. So we're close to finishing up this half. We'll be moving over to the library side in February. Our TV station server that basically runs everything, the TV station died back in October. We've got our new one, it's installed, we're about 90% back to normal now. Terry Schultz and I are working on the very early stages of planning our spring electronics recycling event. We're looking at doing that at the end of April. We've got a date tentatively picked, and more details on that as we get those worked out. And we received 11 proposals for a new phone system. We've narrowed down to four vendors who will be meeting with us in early February, and hopefully then we can either select one out of those four, or maybe narrow it down to two and do a little more research and see where the process leads.
Great. Thanks, Josh. Questions? All right, Henry.
Thanks, Mayor. My report is on page 85. Just a couple brief items. In the personnel area, Andrew mentioned earlier a little bit, we assisted him with reviewing job descriptions, some of the work that he was doing later on in the agenda. We're finishing up our annual performance review process, and then this Thursday, we have some supervisory leadership training at Fox Valley Tech for our key leaders in the organization. In the taxi area, I'm finalizing the vet's home agreement. I kind of hope to have it ready for tonight. We have one little thing we're trying to work through, and we're going to bring that forward. And at the, I guess, discussion we had when we awarded the operators agreement to Brown Cab, we wanted to see a little more advertising, and so we're working on that. Actually, I think Brown Cab has worked out something with Josh to do some underwriting for the radio station. And then finally, just to mark your calendars, on Monday, February 4th, the League of Municipalities will be having a listening session here in Wapaka at the Par Four Restaurant. What they do is they schedule a couple of these around the state, and it's meant for them to get out their kind of legislative agenda for the year, and then to kind of hear any feedback from local government officials. So it's just not for, you know, governments here, local governments in Wapaka County, it's more of a regional meeting. So I'll send out a reminder again when we get closer to that thing. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Henry. All right, let's move on to unfinished business. We have an update on the Evan Street project. Justin?
Thanks, Mayor. We're going to try out our new TVs tonight, so I have the 50% plan for Evan Street, so very few eyes have seen this, so what is that, Josh?
You got to see it. That's what comes off on my TV. If I ignore it, it goes away.
So, yeah, we'll keep this pretty informal. I'll zoom in a little bit, thanks, Andrew. So since it's a 50% plan, means that we've come a long ways to get here, we have quite a bit yet to figure out and solve to get to ready, biddable plans. So as I scroll through here, you'll see some red markups. I mean, those are my comments, and we've already been through this and have kind of sent comments back to the designers. I guess first and foremost, our budget, our estimated budget, $680,000, we are within that budget, so we are sitting pretty good right now. And we're looking at, you know, obviously refining some of these items as we move forward, and hopefully tuning that in and honing it, and, you know, the goal is to get it as cost-effective as possible. So very early in these plans, our cross-section, so currently, as we've talked, if you could slice the world in half and look at it, this is kind of how you would see it. Evan Street right now has just two roughly 11-foot lanes with a shoulder that varies. Sometimes it is gravel, sometimes it is just grass. And what we are planning to move to is something that looks more like this, where we'd have the two 11-foot lanes, but then also the five-foot paved shoulders. Now, this is a fairly wide shoulder. A good example is the recently completed Berlin Street, or, yeah, Berlin Street Bridge, excuse me. You drive through there, you have the double yellow, the white on the outside, and a nice wide shoulder. So if you drive through there, you'll get kind of a feel of how Evan Street will look once it's done. Now, this cross-section... Now, this cross-section, among others, was put up to the public at two different public information meetings. And this one got the, received the majority of votes for both meetings. So there will be no sidewalk or bike trail for the length of the project, like we talked about for being a possibility out there. A couple of the key issues that we will be working on, one is trees. Because we are widening the road, we will have to remove trees. So those X's are tree removals. Now, we've been talking with property owners. We've made a couple phone calls, we've sent out letters, mostly on the south side of M Street. I should probably show you that, there's Berlin. So heading to the east, you can kinda see where trees will be removed. Now those will be done by city crews, and we'll get that done before the construction work starts. So we're planning on doing that in the next few months of going out there and getting that work ready. One big thing that came up with both the public meetings was, well, how do I get to and from my home? How do I get my mail? How do we get my garbage taken out? So access is a key issue out there that we will be working to maintain for all residents out there. So while it's closed down, the road will be closed to through traffic, but open to local traffic. So that means if you live there, you can go to and from. If you're using it as a cut-through, like you normally would, perhaps to go to the school and back, you could get a ticket. And, yeah, and find. Safety is a big issue as well, and maintaining emergency access will also be big. So we'll be writing those into our specs to ensure that we keep this access there for the residents and for emergency purposes. And hold the contractor to that to make sure that they're doing the right things to allow people through. Utilities is another big thing. So along the road, we have WPS, Poles Out There, We Energies. As we widen, the same thing with the trees, the poles will have to go as well. So we're working with those entities to try and get these moves done before the work starts. We have a meeting tomorrow to discuss our sanitary sewer. We gotta, we're anticipating a couple minor repairs. So there's gonna be a little bit of work happening before the big construction happens. We're adding a little bit more curb and gutter, right now on the plan. You can kinda see that down here. This is in some of these areas, you're all familiar. Evan Street is kinda windy, it's kinda hilly. And this kinda shows the vertical extent of it. If you're driving down the road, well, we need to raise the road a little bit. And to help accommodate some of these steeper slopes, well, right now we're proposing a curb and gutter. Now, that may make it to the final design, it may not. We're reviewing that as well. I mean, curb and gutter's a pretty expensive item, but it makes a much better drainage situation, a much better fit in the long run. So really, that's about it. As you can see, again, we have a lot of things going on down at the Churchill Street intersection. We got some issues we need to work out. We, and again, been contacting property owners there as well, and just working through things like that. So that's it, in a nutshell. Schedule, we're on schedule to finish up this design by the end of February. And we're hoping to get it out to bid to contractors and have it due back in early to mid-March. Now, we're planning that because DOT has a bid letting March twelfth, which means all their projects, their early projects, will be out to bid, and contractors can bid on them and receive them by twelfth. We wanna try and beat that, so we are trying to aim for contractors that are looking for work and give us a competitive bid. So, construction, we're anticipating construction as usual, as soon as the weather gets nice. Say, May, June, and possibly July. We're expecting at least about two months of construction out here for this roadway work. And all that scheduling and timeframe will be refined as we get to the end, and be working with contractors. And as we know more about when things will happen, when Brown will be starting to get ripped up out there, we will inform the public. I have a long list now from these public meetings of contact information, phone numbers, emails, addresses. So we'll be keeping them informed as we go. So, we have a long ways to go, more information to be provided as we get closer.
Justin, go back to the very first one that you showed, about the five foot, if you would, and on both sides.
Yep.
I just wanna, so this is the one that the, not only the residents liked, but also our engineering? Is that right?
Yes, yes. The public, they're voted for this one pretty heavily. Engineering-wise, it makes it easier to fit this within the right-of-way versus having a separated, say, trail or sidewalk. Because when you do that, you have that separation, you need more width. And as I kinda mentioned before, with the curb and gutter, you know, we have quite a significant grade change between where the road is now and where the road's going to be. And we have to do that in order to make the match out to the sides, as we go out towards the shoulders, out to matching the people's driveways. So, we're gonna be cutting some areas down, we're gonna be adding a bunch of fill. And to make that all work, the best option, in the designer's opinion, was this, was this our first cross-section?
Well, and quite honestly, this probably solves the problem of putting a sidewalk on one side, and who pays for it? So, you know, I mean, that's helpful there. I'm a little surprised that that's the choice that they made, but I, you know, it does make sense, I guess, that you can walk on either side. I would've felt a little safer with a sidewalk and a separation from the sidewalk and the road, if it was me. But, I mean, I'm, personally, I'm okay with what they would like to see there. They just have to be a little bit more careful when they're walking or riding their bikes.
Yeah, and that's the way it is. And it's twenty-five miles per hour. Now, we've had a number of comments of, people fly through here, we got big trucks. And PD, Chief Hoseal, provided a lot of really good information on the traffic volumes that are out there and the speeds. You know, so we have that information, and what it should be is people driving twenty-five miles per hour. It's a safe, lower speed, and so you should have that safety there when you're walking or biking along the roadway.
All right. Any other questions, comments for him? Scott?
Justin, you mentioned curb and gutter. Is that gonna involve storm sewer, pipe laying for a section of that, or how's that?
Not right now, because we have enough pitch in the road, so we have those hills and valleys. So when we have to make those tie-ins in those areas, we have enough pitch where it can run down. And it's not such a great length where we need to have the storm sewer. So we have it accom, it's showing we have that without adding the storm sewer. But, again, fifty percent plan. But we still have to get to the end here.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? How do you like the screens? Yeah? Yeah, I think so. Yeah, absolutely. All right. Thank you. Got an A on the screens there, Josh. All right, let's move on to new business then. This has to do with the swimming raft, the Big Dock at the South Park Beach. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. This memo starts on page one seventy-one here. As I discussed this memo, I did hand Mary over here a, kind of like a example of the top of the dock. And then, the booklet, if you look at pages thirty-three and thirty-four, you can kinda see, that's just, it doesn't, it's not gonna look like that, but it shows you what the side will look like and the formation of it and stuff. So, pass it along as I'm talking and get a feel for it, take a look at it, and then I can answer questions on that at the end. It is something that we've talked about, or I've talked about in the past. You know, something needs to be done with our dock situation down there. And a lot of it just comes from, you know, especially on the large raft, the integrity, structural integrity, and the safety of our community members, and not only our community members, but the people visiting us here in the summer. And so, all this work and this memo is done in conjunction with the beach manager and our park superintendent, Josh, to make sure that we're gonna be able to keep people safe, and that the maintenance of it is going to be a workout as well, and that it's gonna work for us. So, the first decision was made on the small raft, that we were going to completely strip that down. The guts of the raft were still good, unlike the large one. And so we're gonna redo all the wood, put a new slide on, put a new ladder on, and maybe take a look at how we anchor that as well, to make sure it's safe. So, if you can see in there, luckily, the Friends of Wapaka Parks, and I'm very thankful to them, voted recently to donate up to five thousand dollars to revamp that small raft. So that work's already started. Josh and Casey have been down there, they got the wood, they're replacing the wood. So that raft will look brand-new and still use the guts of the old one. The cost is not five thousand, but we're still working through the ladders and the slides, and we wanna make sure that they're safe and make sure they're appropriate. So, that's why it says up to five thousand dollars. So that one is taken care of, which is very nice of them. The large raft is something that definitely needs to be replaced. We did look at inflatable structures for a while. All three of us talked ourselves out of it for various reasons, including safety, being, having enough lifeguards. There was concerns with some of the larger inflatables, that there's a lot of hidden areas behind there. So it would create more lifeguards, more cost, and it would be tougher to keep kids safe. A kid could get back behind there, not be seen, and go under the water, which is definitely not a situation we want. Other concerns were vandalism and just having to replace them possibly every three to five years. So we went with something a little bit more long-term. So I started reaching out and seeking proposals and ideas. We didn't hold ourselves to keeping it exactly the same. We wanted to see what was out there and what our possibilities were. Our swimming raft setup is not common, so it's not like you can just go out to Fleet Farm and buy a raft like that. So it took a little bit of, you know, problem-solving, engineering, to make this work from some of the companies. And some of the companies weren't able to, and I'll talk about that in just a second. So, I attached some of the quotes we did receive from companies that thought they could create something to replace what we have, what we currently have. And some companies were not able to, and I marked that in there. But I wanted to reach out to as many as I could around the area. Another thing on here that I put, the Friends of Wapaka Parks also voted to donate five thousand dollars to the large raft project as well. So that's a little bit more money coming in. So, if you look at the companies, you can see the proposals. It kinda came down to only one company on the top there, which is a local company, came up with a solution that kind of dealt with all the issues that we have with that dock. So that would be Schmidt Boat Lifts and Docks. They came with that proposal, and that's attached as well. Crandon Docks and Lifts, which is an EZ Dock solution. EZ Dock is like a plastic molded, you know, you may see them as some of the smaller rafts. It looks completely plastic, completely, it's probably not plastic, that's not the right term, but it's a molded, hard plastic. Tommy Docks is close to the same. They didn't have a viable solution. The EZ Dock price looks good. It's lower than the first one, but that's just for the base. And we could not work with them to come up with a solution to add our slide, our diving board, our high dive, where Schmidt Boat Lifts and Docks did come up with solutions on those, and you can see that as part of the picture. Dock Masters, which is out of Wisconsin Rapids, were not able to create any sort of proposal based on our needs. They just couldn't come up with anything, and at least that's what they told me. So, so the one company that I talked about is Schmidt Boat Lifts and Docks. The other ones, you can see some of the issues that we had on there, in the memo that I just talked about. If you look at some of the attachments, the first one is the quote from Schmidt Boat Lifts and Docks. You can also see a picture of the solution. And so what that is, is it's essentially four different dock pieces bolted heavily together and reassured. The plates that you see on there, if you look, that is kind of where our stuff is. Our low diving board, our slide, the high dive board, and then there'll be a few more for the ladders as well. What those plates are gonna do is give us something to anchor to and create some stability and reassurance in what we're trying to do there. The next is just the Crandon Boat Lifts and Docks. And the one after that is what I received from Tommy Docks. That was the only close, the picture there, that's the only close solution they could come up with. So you buy the tubes or the floats, and then you build the dock around it. We did a lot of research on it, very unstable, not a great solution for what we're trying to do here with that one. So those are some of the attachments there. So, based on the quotes and the research, and what we feel is going to actually work down there, and just being a local company, obviously, we've already kinda worked with them through some solutions. We went out there, they've been working with us as much as we needed them to. And I think, you know, they're gonna help us put it together, they're gonna get in the water, they're gonna get us down there. And just having them near us is gonna be helpful as well. So, based on all that information, I just recommend that the Common Council award Schmidt Boat Lifts and Docks to build a new swim raft at the price not to exceed thirty thousand five hundred and eighty-seven, with the five thousand dollars coming from the Friends of Wapaka Parks, and the balance to come from the South Park Trust Fund. All of that approved by Juan Cathy Caza.
All right, so it's recommended by Andrew that we go ahead and purchase, from Schmidt Boat Lifts and Docks, this raft that would be, as we call it, the Big Dock at, at South Park Swimming Area, at a cost not to exceed thirty thousand five eighty-seven, which five thousand of that will come from the Friends of Wapaka Park, and the balance will come from the South Park Trust Fund. Do we hear a motion? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson. Any discussion?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Concern?
Sure.
I'm looking at page one seventy-five, which is part of the contract, and it talks about other than ordinary circumstances resulting in extra charges, one of which is deep water over fifty-four inches. And I thought that was awfully shallow for deep-water concern, but...
One seventy-four, you said?
Pardon me?
Page one seventy-four.
One seventy-five.
So in the writing there, okay. Other than... So, that's, what they're talking about there is the actual installation where they're gonna come. So if they had to go, they're gonna launch it, the pieces off from the boat, boat landing, they're gonna bring it over to the shallow area to put it together. I think what that is, is if they were, you know, muddy, mucky, it says on there, if they had to put that together out in the middle of the lake, there may be more charges on there. So that's the insulation part of it, and putting it together. So if they had to put it in an area where they couldn't touch the bottom, or if it was mucky and muddy, or inclines, or bank, or the lake bottom, that may increase. But they're gonna, what they're gonna do is they're gonna bring them over, they're gonna go right up by the beach where it's shallow, and put it together. They thought that was a great solution, there wouldn't be any issues with that. I think that's what that, I have to read that, as that's what it means.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? So Andrew, color roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Paul Neal?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, Andrew, you're still up, job descriptions.
Yes, thank you. So this one starts on one hundred and eighty. And as Henry said earlier, I did work with him on this, as we kinda went through this process. Both these next two bullet points came from the yearly evaluations. And part of that was just me wanting to sit down and evaluate all the different positions that we have in the department. Take a look at the job descriptions, take a look at the classifications, where we're at with all that. So a lot of that came through that process, and then a lot of discussion with Henry and staff about, you know, their job... staff about, you know, their job abilities and job description, sorry, is what I meant to say there. And so, the first one has to do with the youth center supervisor position. So, this position is in charge of staffing and making sure that everything is staffed when it needs to be. And so, started doing some research, tried to find other positions that were close to it. Very few municipalities have that position because not, very many of them have a rec center like we do, but a lot of YMCA girls and boys' clubs have positions like this. So, that's where a lot of my research came from. During the research, I looked at some, and there's a lot of different pieces here, so I'll try to put it together the best I can, but looked at the job description first. Current job descriptions for this position was last updated in 2015, which all of a sudden is getting quite a while ago. We have added responsibilities since then to our youth center supervisor. A lot of those are, a lot of our weekend community events that they've been putting on for the last two years. It started with a father-daughter dinner. They've had date nights, they've had bingo nights, they've had father-son picnics, they've had mother-son picnics, and they're very well-attended. And so, that person is responsible for creating and also making the budget decisions on those, going out and talking and trying to get donations and deciding how much to spend where so that they can get as many in as they want to. It's been very successful. I think it's a great look for our recreation center and the different things that we're trying to accomplish there on the weekends. So, I added those in. If you can see the attached job description in red on the next couple pages, those are the things that I feel are important to add to that job description. And there's three, two different things on there with three implications. So, as part of that, with the job description, if it does get approved to get changed, talking with Henry, I feel like the level on our classification table, which is also attached to this memo, does not fit what they do. There's budget decisions, there are staffing decisions, there are supervisory decisions that are all made on their own. So, based on the possible job description change, I would also like to see that position moved from a Level 3 to a Level 6 on that plan. If there's questions about the classifications, I think Henry could answer those a little bit better as we move forward. Based on these things, you're moving classifications, you're changing job descriptions, I feel like there should be a little bit of change in the pay schedule as well. All the different changes that I'm proposing as far as pay schedules in this memo and the next memo, all these fit within our current operational budget. So, at no point am I asking for more money in the operational budget. It's just making some updates, making some changes that fit within our current operational budget. So, with the added job duties, possible change of the classification, you know, we looked based on some of the research and where we're at and where we can fit into our budget and still be comfortable, I would like to recommend is, based on this memo, that we're increasing it about .62 per hour above the 2% annual rate to get that position up to where I feel it needs to be in that classification level based on the duties of that position. And that position is really, you know, they're kinda on their own. They're out there at night on their own, they're making decisions on the weekend on their own, during the day, at night. So, you know, it is more of a supervisory position than I think we give it credit for. So, that would put them around about $1,450 per hour, which falls in line with the research and some of the other stuff. So, based on, you know, going through the job description, the classification levels, and the payment, I would recommend adoption of the updated youth center supervisory job description, that this position be moved to a Level 6 in the classification plan, and that we add .62 hour raise above the annual, 2% raise that we gave in 2019 for a new hourly rate of $1,450 moving forward.
Andrew, are there benefits that go along with this?
This position is not a position that receives any benefits. Now, that person has been here for a long, long, long time, so I think they're grandfathered in some paid time off, but that is it.
So, they're not part of the WRS?
No, we keep them under that level.
Okay.
I don't think they've ever gotten to that level.
Sandy.
Sandy is in Wisconsin retirement.
So, there's additional cost to this too that...
Sure, 'cause Tina's warned me many times to keep her under it.
No, Sandy is part of Wisconsin retirement.
Okay, I will trust...
Or she gets really close to the level.
She gets very close, often, but I, I'm pretty sure I've gotten warned multiple times to keep her under so that she doesn't.
I can double-check.
So, I really don't think she does.
This year is a 6.5%. The cost about 6.5 is the contribution for Wisconsin retirement.
Are you able to look that up right now? 'Cause I really, okay, I don't think, I don't think she...
Okay, you're covering it within your budget, and I, let me ask you this, Andrew, are you gonna have any other employees that you're gonna bring forward with pay raises?
Nope.
Okay, checking. I'd rather see these go during the budget process instead of after we've prepared our budget for the year, but you're taking care of it within your budget, so I understand.
Yeah, and I understand that as well. I think a lot of it is just, you know, I think that budget process happened before the process of doing the evaluations and just me learning the positions and where we're at for all that.
Absolutely.
The only reason I bring it forward is because they are, they have definitely changed what they're doing and how much they're doing, and I feel like that needs to be addressed at this point.
All right, so Andrew is recommending that we change the level of classification for the youth center supervisor to a Level 6, and also to give them a pay increase of 62 cents per hour, and this would be over and above the 2% raise that they are receiving for 2019, so it amounts to $14.50 per hour. Do you wanna make that motion?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Keeland. Any discussion?
Well, not the, if she is under the benefits, would that affect our budget?
Well, Andrew is saying that it's, he's going to eat it up within his budget.
The pay raise...
She gets retirement pay, etc.
She isn't on.
That's what I thought. So, there's no added cost other than just what we're looking at here.
All right. So, is that your question?
So, she's like a permanent part-time, is that what?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay.
And she's kept under the hours.
Okay, great.
The paid time off is, right, something that...
So, you're just the one person right now that qualifies for this position?
Yes.
Or, okay.
There's only one person in this position, everyone else is just a part-time status.
Okay.
And she's in, that position is in charge of all those people.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
And Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, it looks like you're trying to beat Justin for all the...
I'm trying to take up the most time.
Yeah, you're up next.
At least we have cookies, so. Next to our little bit quicker, so this one is also some, it's not necessarily a change, it's something we never had, and I found that as I went through all the different positions. So, our senior center has multiple part-time staff, they teach the wellness classes, they do the activities, they do a lot down there. So, I wanted to take a look at their job descriptions, make sure they were updated, and there were no job descriptions. And they also don't really have a set pay schedule either. So, I wanted to address that as we move forward, as, you know, maybe our senior center coordinator has to make hires here in the future, just cleans things up and makes them a little bit better. So, again, this, these staff teach a lot of different classes, they also, as far as pay, there's no consideration for certifications that they hold. Many of them have multiple certifications in things such as strong seniors, living well, yoga, AFEP. I looked at five different senior centers and requested their pay schedules. I attached two of them, all of them are pretty close to the same. You can see all of them give some sort of, a little bit more bump in pay based on those certifications. They take time, they take money, and they, you know, are important to us that they have them. So, worked with the senior center coordinator to write up these job descriptions, worked with Henry a little bit as well to best follow what they currently do. The office activity assistant you see on there is not a position that she currently has, but it's possible future position, so we wanted to just take care of that now before we move forward. The same is true for that pay schedule as well for that position. So, to, working, we wrote up the job descriptions. To complete the pay schedule, as I said earlier, I talked with five other senior center departments. Those included New London, Iowa, DePere, Oshkosh, and Berlin. I tried to get a mix of people that were smaller than us, people that were a little bit bigger than us, people that are the same. I've attached the ones from New London, DePere, as a reference to what we're trying to accomplish here. Again, this pay schedule fits into our current operational budget. Some of the employees will not, are already past this, so they won't fall into this. There are some employees that would get a small bump as they kinda just correct and get to where they need to be based on this. As you can see, based on some of the other positions, we didn't go as high as some of the other senior centers. If you look at some of the ones that we have for reference, we're kinda right in the middle of trying to stay where we're at and make sure that we stay within our operational budget, so no new funds are needed. You can see the proposed pay scale effective would be at this point moving forward. You can see the wellness instructor as normal, you can see the wellness instructor with a certification gets a little bit of a bump as they move up. The computer instructor, which is, you know, it'd be great to find somebody that can teach yoga and senior, strong seniors, and be great at computers, but it really hasn't worked out too well for us. So, that's kind of a separate position at this point, and then you can see the fourth one. Yeah, Josh can do that, that's good. Activity assistant, front desk possibility. So, those are the things, those are, again, not updates, it's just trying to get something set in stone as we move forward. It does fit within our operational budget. So, I would just recommend that the Common Council approves the newly-created job descriptions, classification levels, and pay schedules for the senior center with an effective date of today, January 15.
All right, you heard Andrew's recommendation, do we have a motion?
So, move.
Motion by Keeland.
Second.
Second by Peterson, that we approve of the job description for the senior staff that Andrew has listed and the pay schedule for that, effective today. Any questions or discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. One more.
Good.
This is the fastest one. As you all know, we hired Cassandra Humke. She started as our Recreation Program Supervisor on August 20th. She's done an amazing job, shown great initiative, made some changes, added to a lot of our programs, really stepped into that role very well for the city of Wapaka. Just based on that information or job performance, we're looking to move her off of her probationary period, just a little bit early, to just make it easier to move forward as we go for her on regular status. So, you guys have heard some of the things she's been doing with the booklet and some of that other stuff. It's very easy to know that she's gonna do a great job for hopefully a long time for the city. So, I just recommend that the Common Council take Cassandra Humke off her probational, probationary status and move to regular status for the position of Recreation Program Supervisor effective upon approval of the council.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Olson, sorry, tried to put them together. Hackett, Olson, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you for all those, I'm done.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, next we have an easement out in Godfrey Drive. Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. My memo can be seen on page 199 in the packet and then following documentation from WPS. What they, WPS is looking for is an easement along Godfrey Drive in basically the new, newly-created outlot associated with the Go Right Way development. Now, this was, outlot was created for the gull access, or access to the gull property further behind, so it was shifted over. So, now we have that outlot that is owned by the city just off of Godfrey. WPS needs to extend existing utilities to the Go Right Way site, and to do that, they just need to cut through our outlot, excuse me. So, this is pretty straightforward and standard, there should be no issues with this easement. I mean, we anticipate this to be a driveway access for the life of the property, and like any other easement, if they come in there and have to do repairs, replacement, they will restore the area. So, we've seen these before from WPS where they provide the agreement, a temporary exhibit, we sign everything. Once the work is done, if there is no changes, then they just basically make that temporary exhibit into a permanent one and then record it at the courthouse. If there are any changes, then I come back here and get your approval once again. So, if there is any questions, I'll take those, otherwise I'm looking for approval of this easement document, document number shown in the memo there as described in the memo.
Okay, as Justin said, it's pretty straightforward. If you can see the map on page 204 on the west side of that outlot.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut, that we approve of this easement by Wisconsin Public Service. Any discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, Justin, you're still up here.
All right, my next memo on page 205, and information to follow behind that deals with a timber sale agreement on the Shamble Hill City-Wapaka property. It's got 10 acres up there. This one is not straightforward, it has quite a backstory to it. However, we received a proposal upon request from a logger, Mason Logging Inc., here in Wapaka, to do a selective cut of the 10-acre parcel of our land that's up, or Shamble Water Tower is up there, we have 10 acres altogether. We looked into it, kind of on an unusual circumstance. Andrew got a call one day that a couple of our trees got cut down by accident up there. And we went up there, looked at it, yes, somebody did come onto our property and cut our trees down by mistake. Now, Attorney Hart is working through that process. We believe we have that pretty much squared away where the, was not the logger's fault per se, but the forester who marked the trees did not verify where the property lines were. The logger was doing a job for Guster Enterprises, which has property adjacent to ours, logged a bunch of logs off of their property, and then, well, came up onto ours by mistake. So, through that process, we have to, of course, work with Mr. Hart over there, and we hired out a independent forester to do a review for us and recommendation on that. So, based on that, we will be getting compensated for our loss following what is worked out, I guess with an agreement and state statutes. But as we were up there, we, it was kind of thought, well, should we do the rest? And it became a recommendation from this independent forester that said, your stand would benefit from this selective cut. So, it's something where we're targeting trees that are... this, uh, selective cut, so, uh, it's something where, uh, we're targeting trees that are largely defective, or to the point where if they get any older, they're, they're just going to fall down or just get diseased anyways, uh, the slight caveat to it is, we would make a little bit of money, um, we don't know exactly what it is, because it depends on the, um, the value of the wood at the mill rate, uh, which is ever-changing, but we assume it's going to be several, several thousand dollars, so, um, the other little tidbit of it is only getting one, um, it's believed that this Mason Logging is about the only one would be willing to do such a small job, um, on this stand, uh, it's not, you know, it's, we're not going to make a whole lot of money out of, out of it, it's not extremely valuable wood, uh, but it is a, a benefit to the city both monetarily and keeping our forests healthy to do it, and also he's there to finish up the, uh, Gustvar property, uh, so it's kind of piggybacking and getting a little bit more efficiency gain from, uh, doing both properties at one time. I don't know if Andrew would like to add anything, or Attorney Hart, but feel free, or I'll open it up to questions.
Steve, go ahead.
My question is, um, when we pay this Mason Logging Incorporated, um, are we still going to be coming out ahead? Because I don't know how much he's charging, but I imagine he charges a good deal.
We're not, we're not paying him.
He sells the logs and takes a portion, we don't pay him, we, it, the, the cut is sixty, forty, or forty, whatever, but he's going to sell those logs and give us the quote that he's, either thirty or thirty-five dollars, he's assuming he can sell them for more than that, it's likely, but usually it's about, the way that comes out, it's usually sixty percent for the landowner and forty percent for the logging company.
Okay.
Or fifty, it's right in there.
The prices that he has on his, uh, agreement here, I did verify, uh, and they seem to be reasonable.
Thank you.
Okay, cut some trees, we need a motion to, uh, enter into a timber sale agreement with, uh, Mason Logging Incorporated of Opaaca, uh, for doing some timber cutting on, uh, Shamble Hill. Motion? Nobody wants to do it?
So move.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we, uh, approve of entering into an agreement with Mason Logging Incorporated for sale of timber on city land occupied by Shamble Hill Water Tower. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Abstain.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
And Mary Fair?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one abstention, motion carried.
You know, uh, good that it's passed, but Justin, when they do these timber cuts, they normally just take the trees and who's going to clean up the brush afterwards, are we going to just leave it for it to rot and, in there?
Um, well, I know the trail will be cleaned up, because we've talked about that extensively, uh, the tops, the pine boughs, I don't know, we, I guess we did not discuss that, so...
Well, I mean, if you're going to leave it, I don't know, I, I just want you to know ahead of time that it's, it's going to be a mess.
Yeah.
I mean, he's, they, they think they all do that, but yeah, do it that way.
Well, the trail will be cleaned up, that's for sure, because we have the trail going through there, that will be cleaned up, yeah, there probably will be a little bit of a mess, but it'll be resulting material, natural decay material that'll hopefully support future trees.
Rabbits will like it.
There you go.
Actually, the term for that is called slash.
Slash?
Slash, the leftover stuff.
Slash?
Bit of trivia for you.
Ends with a S-H, so that would make sense, yeah, okay, all right. Well, I was just concerned if it's used, uh, for walking purposes or whatever, you know, and it's going to be a little messy up there.
If it becomes, uh, an issue, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when it comes.
Yep, I get it. All right, uh, license report fourteen thirty-three, this is taxi drive license renewal, these must be on an annual basis also, so we have four names on there, we need a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Pritchardski.
Second.
Second by Hackett to approve license report fourteen thirty-three, this is the taxi driver's license renewal, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried, license, uh, fourteen thirty-four, this is just, uh, the renewal of the, uh, license report for the, the actual vehicles for, and this is for R and R Transport, does he keep you up to date, Henry, on...
Can I talk to Roy, we're, we're going to try to get, get him in and talk to Carl, do a little better coordination, because they're kind of fighting over the same ride sometimes, and it's inefficient, and even Roy offered that up, that we need to work on it.
Okay, but the vehicles, he keeps you up to date on those.
Yeah, well, I know when he came in, he was lamenting he had a, a number of fairly large repairs on them.
Yeah, yeah, he hits more deer than anybody I know, so, yeah. So we need, uh, approval of license report number fourteen thirty-four.
Move to approve.
Uh, motion by Olson, and second by Fair, that we approve of license report fourteen thirty-four.
Henry, are all these vehicles in good running shape? Because there's a ninety-seven, uh...
Yeah, well...
It's getting pretty...
Well, they have to carry insurance on them, and we require, uh, liability insurance and stuff, so, uh, we don't inspect the vehicles, uh, I suppose if they're running down the roads, the headlights out, or, you know, brake light isn't working, then they're susceptible to being pulled over and checked, so...
Henry...
Well, if it's any consolation, we have taxi vehicles, the last one I just got rid of was a two thousand, uh, two thousand, I think, and it had, you know, like a hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred thousand miles on it.
Are our vehicles inspected with brown, then?
Well, they're city vehicles.
Yeah, okay.
They have to insure them, that's part of their lease, they insure them, you know, they put the gas in it, and everything like that, so, um, they have maintenance logs that they keep, in fact, uh, when DOT comes up, um, they don't spot audit us every year, but they just did it last year, and they, uh, went through a couple, a couple of the vehicles, and they found, I think in the one van, their fire extinguisher bracket was broken, and the fire extinguisher was kind of laying in the back, so, but yeah.
We did vote, yeah. Okay. Any other questions? All right, we're going to vote here, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried, uh, next is, uh, license report, uh, number fourteen thirty-five, uh, this has to do with the operator's or bartender's license, there are five names on there, again, pending, uh, background checks, and payment of any fines to the city that might be owed, I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve of license report number fourteen thirty-five, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried, uh, now we have license report fourteen thirty-six, this is just a dance hall license, uh, for a renewal on, uh, the Ramada Reflections Bar, need a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Fair, that we approve of license report fourteen thirty-six, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried, we are now to Brennan and, uh, resolution fourteen twenty-three, Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, this item starts on page two sixteen of your packet, uh, this item that's in front of you this evening is, um, the next steps in development, I would say, of the, of the downtown and redevelopment of the downtown, um, over the last couple of years, the council has adopted multiple plans with the, the downtown Main Street redevelopment, along with the, uh, river, Rhode River View Park Plan update that identified the property to locate at one oh five North Jefferson Street, that the end of East Fulton Street as a preferred option for a veterans' park, um, if everyone remembers, uh, Henry and I have been dealing with, uh, a couple of different groups over the last couple of years, looking at trying to create a memorial in the community, and as we've gone through multiple planning exercises, have kind of narrowed in on this property, in addition to, this property wa, was identified as a redevelopment opportunity in both of the plans, um, this evening, uh, in your packets, we are seeking, um, approval from the common council to start the process of, um, going forward, utilizing legal statutes, uh, thirty-two oh six and thirty-two oh seven, to acquire the property through condemnation. We have, over the last couple of years, made multiple attempts to, uh, to contact the property owners, not only by myself and city staff here, but also through, uh, Von Briesen Associates, who we utilize for land use issues, and our letters have gone unfounded or un, and not picked up, in addition, um, I think any, everyone here can, uh, look at the property, it is continuing to, uh, deteriorate, it is becoming basically a public nuisance in, in the downtown and within the community, we have sent multiple violation notices to the property, we've also sent, uh, multiple citations, and those have also either gone unpaid or, uh, unclaimed at the post office as well, um, therefore, we're, we're seeking approval this evening to move forward with the next steps, in October of last year, the planning commission made, uh, took the first initial steps, and that resolution's in your packet, that identified this property as in conformance with a comprehensive plan to have this as some form of a proposed park in the future, the statutes that we are looking to seek, or that we're looking to utilize to acquire this property is for park purposes, um, the process that we're looking at here is going to take around six to eight months, um, to complete, that's the estimated timeline, depending on what route and what statutes we need to utilize, it could go a little bit quicker, it could go a little bit longer, um, we have discussed with the council before the process, we will have to get an appraisal, um, and proper notification will be sent out to the property owner as we go through this, but this evening is the first step in, in adopting or passing resolution fourteen twenty-three to start the process of, uh, condemnation on the property, uh, in my memo as well, uh, since Kathy is here this evening, uh, this has been an on-again, off-again property that was looked at for, uh, acquisition, it was not budgeted in twenty nineteen, as we were uncertain of the process, or what we were going to move forward with, um, but as we move forward and a price is determined, we would be certainly working with Kathy and the finance department to, uh, determine what method is best to, uh, acquire this property and purchase it, uh, hopefully in twenty nineteen. Any questions?
No, I, let me, can I make sure that I understand though?
Yep.
It might not be in our two thousand nineteen budget, but it was in our plan to purchase this property.
Correct.
So we would just be purchasing it ahead of time if we got it in nineteen, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, so, I mean, we talked about this, obviously, way back, uh, quite a few months, but way back in October is when we first talked about it, and now we're moving forward with it, any other questions or comments?
I had heard that the bank was buying it, is that...
But, I...
Has, has anybody, so if, if that...
Well, we're moving forward with the confirmation...
With ours, but then, if the bank bought it, how would, would we be affected by that?
We would just retract the process.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Any advantages to waiting or not waiting, like nineteen versus twenty, Brennan, or it's, it's just, we want to get the ball rolling type thing?
I, I think, uh, we, we want to get the ball rolling here, I mean, this has been, you know, the veterans' groups approached the city back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and, you know, th, this process, not only to acquire the property, but also the development of, you know, the design development, everything else is going to take a couple of years, so the sooner that we can get this property down, because it is continuing to be a nuisance in the downtown, um, I, that is more, more of the critical issue right now, and the building's continuing to deteriorate, become a nuisance, not only for the city, but, you know, the adjacent property owners, so the sooner that we can acquire it and take the next steps to, um, remove it from there, the better off we will be.
Especially without it being occupied, too.
Correct.
Right. It's occupied with critters.
Yeah, could be, it could be. Uh, anybody else? We need a motion to approve this resolution, then?
So moved.
Second? Uh, motion by Mayor, I'm second, who's second? Keeland? That we approve, uh, resolution fourteen twenty-three in the matter of a resolution, uh, of necessity for veterans' park, any discussion? All in favor, whoops, sorry, Sandy will call the roll.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Awesome, uh, item number ten had to do with that thirty-minute discussion that we had, uh, and we were going to have Elizabeth, uh, from Brennan's office make a presentation tonight, we chose, uh, not to do that tonight because of the weather, I understand it's not very nice out there, so...
Getting worse.
We felt the sooner we got out, the better, so this will be on our next agenda, which will be the first, uh, meeting in February...
February fifth.
February fifth, okay, so we are tabling this until the next meeting, not that it lacks importance, it does, but, uh, we just felt that we could wait on that. Okay, communications, recommendations, the mayor, I'll put those off too till February fifth, we need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second.
Motion by Olson, second by Keeland, that we adjourn our meeting, uh, until, uh, February fifth, two thousand nineteen, subject to call, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried, we're adjourned at, uh, seven twenty-seven PM, thanks, everybody, drive safe.